Scott?
Here.
Waters?
Here.
Moore?
Here.
O'Kane?
Here.
Jainer?
Stand for a moment of silent prayer followed by the Pledge of Legions, please.
The Pledge of Legions to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hape?
Mayor figure, he goes, God knows what he's talking about.
Whereas the Native community of Sioux City has worked tirelessly to advocate and raise awareness about injustices happening to the Native people in child welfare, juvenile justice, and adult court systems. And whereas the Native community in Sioux City has sought to bring about change in regard by peacefully and prayerfully exercising their constitutional rights to assemble and to voice their desire for change and how they are treated. Whereas the community initiative for the Native children and families will begin their 21st annual memorial to honor lost children with two days of educational events on November 20th and 21st, and will embark on the annual memorial march to honor lost children on November 22nd, 2023. Whereas we support the commitment of the Native community and their continued efforts to focus on building bridges and fostering understanding, we thank the community initiative for the Native children and families and all individuals and organizations responsible for holding the memorial march to honor lost children and wish them much success. Now, therefore, I, Robert E. Scott, Mayor of the city of Sioux City, Iowa, on behalf of city council, do hereby proclaim November 23 as Native American Month and do further proclaim November 22nd, 2023, as the Memorial March to Honor Lost Children. I'd like to present this to you and say a few words, if you would.
All right. Thank you very much. Monape Lemire, 1328 Street. Thank you very much for continuing to remember our relatives that get lost in the system and have also passed away in the system. You know, and I'd have to say that last couple of years, we've moved back to Sioux City and we're doing the best we can to help organize our community a little bit better because probably the most important question that I've gotten a couple of years ago was, okay, allies are in place, what do you got? And just economically, we weren't ready to, we advocated it, but then we weren't ready to like, figure out who's gonna, who's gonna do what, you know? And so, I'd have to say after a couple of years, bit by bit, we are making progress on the Indigenous end of helping provide solutions. We do the best we can, but I think, like my dad would always say, once you, once you create something, then the real work begins, right? So, or the community would have a victory, and then the understanding is, all right, now, now the real work begins. So, we recognize that, and we have been doing better and better, I believe. And I think in the next, this next year, you're really gonna, you're really gonna notice. And so, this is, we're trying the best we can to provide not just services to Indian people, but be more proactive. And maybe Sioux City could be a hub for the rest of the state of Iowa, all the foster parents and all the Indian foster parents, and then all the Indians too, right? So, we got a lot of bases to cover, and bit by bit, we're feeling more confident in that. And I think all of this would, I think everybody would have a feeling of being blessed, and we can contribute in healthy ways to this community. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for this.
Thank you.
And good job, everybody. Keep, keep doing what you're doing.
All right, my friend.
And would you, do you have the details, or would you, sorry, just before the applause, remind people about the event that the mayor alluded to as far as the march?
Oh, yeah, yeah. So, tomorrow night, we're gonna have a little community meal amongst ourselves, the Indigenous community, and then, and then in the morning, Wednesday morning, we're gonna have a prayer walk. And we start that up at War Eagle at about eight o'clock. And it starts with a prayer, and then we're gonna come and walk all the way down to the Urban Native Center, where we're gonna have a prayer there, too. And then we're gonna come down to the
Courthouse.
The county courthouse.
10:30.
And we'll have somebody pray over there. And, you know, over the years, we used to go into that lobby area, and maybe a couple people might go up and maybe smudge off the courthouse, or we'll just say an invocation, because a lot of big, heavy situations happen, unfold in those courtrooms. So, my dad always felt it was very important to extend a blessing to those rooms and to the judges and anybody involved. And then, and then, we used to rendezvous at the old Four Directions, but the last stop is at the, at the convention center, just right over here.
Yeah, like 11 or something.
Yeah, yeah. And, and we'll have a meal. We'll round that out with a few good words from people, and then a meal. And, you know, and this is, it started off as a protest, but we are, we're shifting to memorializing and remembering children that are, that are lost to that and taking that responsibility. Can we do better? Can we make things better for these youths and families? And I think at the end of the day, we're all dealing with some type of mourning. Most of the mental health crises and addictions and these back, at the end of consequences, these services that, that the city provides, we provide, we're starting to mix that with a little bit of proactivity. And I think the march, you recognizing the march, helps us remember that proactivity and kind of shift that a little bit, even in our own community. So.
Yeah, I appreciate that. I just, I'm gonna be out of town with my family, but I wanted to make sure if anyone's gonna be around, that it's a very moving ceremony.
Yeah, everybody's welcome. Everybody's welcome to come down.
I'm gonna try to be the courthouse at 10:30. If I don't make that, I'm going to the convention center, but I'll be there.
All right. Well, you gotta come grab a piece of fried bread over at the convention center, too.
Right, right.
Great meal. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Building and Housing Code, Ryan Bollinger. Ryan, you wanna serve a little more?
I do. Ryan Bollinger, 4605 Hamilton Boulevard.
Tell us why you want to continue to serve.
Just, I think it's very important to help out your community, do what you can. And I feel like serving on the Building and Housing Code board allows me to do that with my background in commercial construction.
I really appreciate that you're renewing your term as well, asking, applying for that.
Yeah.
Because, yeah, you're an important part of that committee, I know.
Thank you. We appreciate it.
Yeah, really appreciate it. Thanks.
Go Cyclones. Not a Hawkeye fan, so it's easy for me to say that, Ryan. Inclusive Sioux City Advisory Committee, Peggy Lau. Is Peggy here?
I don't see her.
We'll, we'll go to Stephen then. Stephen, come on up. After a big week of Yamanashi City, or?
No doubt. I was thinking that. It's related to apply when I can, yeah, we just had an explanation of what we're all doing on the committee or have been for the last, like, year or two here, but Stephen Pastolka, City Legal, 2400 Jackson Street. Yeah, it's been an absolutely fantastic time on this committee. Obviously, we built a really good relationship with our neighbors from across the Pacific, and I had an absolutely fantastic time meeting them in person last week and look forward to continuing to work with them and build that relationship in the future. And my fiance did promise me that we can go to Japan for our five-year anniversary. So, this is on the record. I'm holding you to that, Amy. Do you hear me?
Yeah, exactly. Exactly right. I like that.
All right.
I think you'll do great.
Tell Dr. McKinley hi.
I will do that.
Been a while since I've visited with him. And I got to know through the Yamanashi City, all the celebration, Dr. Greg Geltzer. So, that was fun to get to know him better.
I made sure to send Dr. McKinley a picture of Geltzer being very embarrassed with his new street sign.
For sure.
Well, thank you.
Well, thanks for all your work.
Appreciate it.
We'd have Stephen. Thanks.
Okay, we're gonna go on to the consent agenda, items three through 13F today. If you want to speak on an item, please come up. As I read that item, if you want to speak up on an item not on the agenda, please come up under Citizen Concerns. Anytime you come to the microphone, state your name and address for the record. I'll move the consent agenda. Second, reading of the November 13 city council minutes, four is a motion accepting the parking and skywalk system board of trustees annual report. Five is a resolution authorizing the police department to submit an application to the Office of Drug Control Policy State Crisis Intervention Program for grant funding. Resolution adopting plans and specs for the Headington Park splash pad project. Angel, I just saw that one of the cities, I gave it to Bob, got a grant from the Iowa something. Have we ever applied for one for a splash pad?
We have not. No.
Well.
It was in the Iowa League of Cities magazine. It was from the Iowa Economic Development Authority.
Oh, Iowa League of Cities.
Yeah.
Might want to do that going forward, just to see. Seven's a resolution amending the position classification manual by adopting an updated job description for fleet manager and reclassifying one fleet supervisor to fleet manager. Eight are actions relating to grants and agreements and contracts, I'm sorry. A is a resolution approving a federal aid agreement with IDOT for the Les Hills Scenic Trail Construction Project. B is a resolution approving a purchase agreement from New Perspectives for the South Mulberry Street Extension Project. C is a resolution approving a consulting services agreement with JEO for consulting the undersized water main replacement project. D is a resolution approving a contract in Istrum Electric for the South Bridge Water Treatment Plant High Service Pump Project. E is a resolution awarding a service provider agreement to Crouch Recreation to provide and install a shade structure at Pearl Street Park. Actions authorizing payments number nine, A is a resolution authorizing payment to KP Construction for the Thompson Park Improvement Project. B is authorized, actions authorizing payments to Mark Alvinicious for the following projects, West Palmer Avenue and George Street Intersection Reconstruction, Big Two Rivergate number five, storm sewer repairs, Lorain Avenue Sewer Point Repair. Ten are actions relating to properties. A is a resolution inviting proposals to lease land in the Donner Park Urban Renewal Area, announcing the intent to accept the proposal of Floyd Slow Pitch Softball Association, and scheduling a hearing. B is a resolution proposing to sell portions of the vacated Shields Avenue and the vacated Zaca Chua Park. Eleven are purchasing. A is a resolution authorizing the city manager to purchase ambulance property and liability insurance from Mills, Shellhammer, Pitts Associates.
Mayor?
Yes.
I just want to point out, because I thought this was really good, actually, the expiring coverage was $68,538 per year. The renewed coverage is offered at $77,047 per year. This represents a 12% increase. But what was pointed out in our homework is that some of the increase is due to increased call volume and three additional full-time employees that were added. So, I just wanted to point that out to everybody. I think it's important to know that.
B is a resolution awarding a purchase order to Billion Kia for Kia K5 GT sedan. Twelve are appointment, or applications for beer liquor license. Thirteen, beer board commission and committee minutes. Anyone want to be heard on any of those items? Used to be on that convention.
I'm bad.
Need to make the print bigger. Those items past five, zero, fourteen is the downtown infrastructure reconstruction master plan.
Gordon Ferris, City Engineer. Today, we want to present to you the, our final master plan for the downtown infrastructure project, which is not a project. It's a cold collection of all of our projects that are needed in the downtown area. We've been working on several infrastructure master plans over the past few years, including the citywide water system master plan, the sanitary sewer and storm water master plan, and now this, the downtown infrastructure master plan, which compiles the other two master plans as well. This was driven by several water main failures that we've had in the past, specifically the one in front of the Orpheum that we just got done replacing. That, that creates a lot of impact to all the different businesses in that area and damages. So, some of the projects that we've done in this, just recently this year, was the Pierce Street Water Main Project, which is now complete. We do have some final paperwork for that. And the Eighth Street Reconstruction from Douglas to Nebraska, that will be starting, probably not next year, but the year after. And that will be after the law enforcement center is demolished. And then we'll be reconstructing that street. But tonight, we want to hear from our consultant, JEO, Jason Peak, who will present this final plan.
All right. Well, good evening, Mayor and Council. Thank you again for having me back to talk about the downtown infrastructure master plan. My goal tonight is just to kind of revisit and review this plan with you, and then let Gordon talk about next steps. So, as Gordon mentioned, you know, the primary impetus for this downtown infrastructure master plan was to put Sioux City on a proactive footing for identifying and prioritizing underground infrastructure projects in the downtown area. So, this project focused on water mains, sewer lines, and storm lines within the confines of Floyd Boulevard on the east, Wesley Parkway on the west, Eighth Street to the north, and Gordon Drive to the south. Our project process to kind of look at not only the technical aspects driving the replacement of that infrastructure, but also included a robust public engagement, which I'll talk about. It also included looking at some of the other work that had previously been done in the area, whether that was your CIP or Capital Improvement Plan, identifying road, and other projects in the downtown area. It also included meeting with your economic development team and developers to kind of understand where the priority was for redevelopment downtown, and then kind of resulting in a prioritized recommendations. So, as I mentioned, we had a robust public engagement. There was kind of three levels to that with this project. We had a core team made up of city staff that as we gathered information, ran that by them. Then we had a downtown stakeholder group, including various representatives from the downtown area, as we worked through the process. And then we also did a number of public meetings. The result of that, combined with your CIP and talking to developers, was what we call a heat map. That's the blue-orange graphic. What that basically reflects is, when we got feedback about the higher priority areas, they would have a higher temperature color. So, that white-hot being kind of the highest priorities, with the blue being kind of the, the lower priority areas in the downtown. So, we had the stakeholder, the qualitative input. Then the other piece was to do some engineering analysis, and I'll spend a moment here on your, the water main analysis. We did an analysis looking at what was the likelihood of failure of your water mains in downtown, and also the consequence of failure. So, trying to figure out what's the probability that a main might have a break in a certain area, and then if that main does break, what's that consequence of the failure. This map you see before you is kind of the, the summary of that risk analysis with the red areas basically highlighting the areas that are higher risk. That doesn't mean the areas in green are not without risk. And the way that we got there is, we looked at your water main break history for, we had data for, starting in 2000, with some gaps in between. We looked at the inventory information on your water main. If we had the date, and we knew the age of the water main, and then also the material. HDR is the consultant helping us look at that, has quite a portfolio of understanding water mains here in the Midwest and what that likelihood of a water main break may be. And I know, talking with Gordon, we recently had a, a water main break on Seventh, kind of between Nebraska and Pierce, and we don't have a project identified there. And that's, part of the reason for that is this list was to help you prioritize where to focus. So, you may have main breaks that happen outside of these project areas, but as we kind of went through the technical analysis, trying to prioritize where do you get the best return on investment downtown, that's where those projects listed in this report are. It's not to say you won't have other infrastructure failures, but these would be the higher priority locations. So, that's a little bit on the, the water main. Like I said, the, the red areas primarily, if we look at Nebraska and Pierce, completed some work there, but we have some other areas. Also, Iowa to the east edge of downtown, had a high number of breaks, and given the age of the water main, that's what prompted that moving up. It's a, an area that needed to be addressed as well.
What do the numbers back on that slide, like, the high risk is 6.3 to 8.8. What, what do those numbers really mean, though?
It's a scale. So, relative, like, as we kind of built different indices of the number of breaks, the age of the material, other condition issues, kind of built a, a relativity fail to assess level of risk. So, kind of on a scale of one to 10, 10 being the highest possible risk, that, that's kind of where, where those numbers come from.
Okay, thank you.
This includes what other businesses around it would be affected as well, right? If there were a break, a catastrophic?
So, yeah, to, to build on that consequence of failure, we talked about the impact. So, if the water mains around Mercy One failed, you know, and they were without water, that's a high impact. Or to the school district, or if there were a number of different service connections on one main, that would be a higher impact than a main with fewer service connections. And that, that gets layered into that. Also, that likelihood of failure to create this index score. The other thing I'd point out is, you know, our data basically was from 2000 to this point forward, as you continue to have water main breaks downtown because you have aging infrastructure, you know, it's one thing to kind of revisit that break history and see if this analysis needs to be updated.
Is there somewhere in here coming forward that tells us how many blocks this is?
I didn't do a block count, Councilwoman. I mean, what we will show you at the end is there's approximately 30 projects that were identified in there, but I didn't have the specific number of blocks off the top of my head.
Okay.
Thank you. So, as Gordon mentioned, you also had two other studies going on citywide at the same time. And so, we leveraged the information. That was done by another consultant. Black and Beach was looking at your storm waters network citywide, as well as your sewer network citywide, and looked where they identified deficiencies. So, on the stormwater side, we had three kind of drainage areas in downtown that were identified as they modeled the system for what we call your design storm level of service. These were three areas where you had pipes that were undersized, that would not be able to handle the design storm based on your level of service. And the whole point of this is, we're trying to layer, like, if you have water main, sewer, and storm in the same area, where do we have that synergy that you would get best return on investment and highest priority for replacement?
And do those colors represent anything, or no?
The different colors for the basin were just to highlight that those were three different areas, just for visual.
I just wanted to make sure that it wasn't like the
Good question.
gravity of the situation or something.
Yes.
Urgency, maybe.
And what I'd say, I mean, overall, from the study, the water main is what's driving the priority of your projects, because on the storm and both the sewer side, what to say, those are coming from a modeled condition, trying to meet a, a level of service. Whereas the water main, just the technical analysis piece, we have a better, I guess, confidence in that, that risk factor of kind of prioritizing where those projects are. On the sewer side, you know, the city had a number of sewer mains replaced as part of an earlier separating your, your storm and sewer projects. So, there were not any condition issues that were identified in the downtown area, but the modeled condition did identify some segments that may have some capacity constraints, basically meaning that, you know, the sewer load that comes through there could exceed the, the crown of the pipe. And so, these areas are identified in the report as potential project locations for sewer repair, with kind of a caveat of making sure we kind of validate and model those. There wasn't enough wet weather flow during the modeling to kind of, I get all the data that Black and Beach wanted, but these were a couple of the lines, red and blue, red being the higher priority that they identified as, as needing further investigation and potentially needing replacement. So, gathering all the technical input, as well as the qualitative input from public, we combined all that to come to a prioritized project list. So, just kind of thinking of these four maps overlaying on top of each other, where do you have the highest priority? And that's what kind of generated these projects. So, as I mentioned, there's about 30 projects identified in this downtown infrastructure master plan with a total construction cost of about $54.8 million. The color coding here represents just the different project type. The yellow is sanitary only, the pink, sanitary and storm projects, the light blue is a storm only, the brown would be a water main replacement only, and then the green would be a water and storm replacement project. I'd also note in the detailed report, as we go through these projects, we also put notes for staff to look at. There are other projects identified in the CIP in those locations that they may want to consider as they take on design and replacement of those areas.
Such as paving or active transportation, those types of?
Exactly, yep. If you had it for a streetscape enhancement, paving replacement, bike, pedestrian facilities, those types of things, yes.
In fact, that, for all of the master plans, this one and this water, the storm, and the sanitary, those will all be consulted when we have any kind of reconstruction projects or any kind of projects going on. We'll look at that and kind of cross-reference and say, oh, hey, while we're here, this storm inlet or storm pipe needs to be replaced, that sort of thing.
Is your total cost approximately, that you're showing 54.8 million, is that current dollars or current cost?
Current cost, yes, based on current construction estimates.
Okay.
So, if these projects, you know, depending on when they're actually delivered, inflation is not factored into what that ultimate cost would be.
Okay, thank you.
Did you break it down at all by category, what the cost would be? I mean, just looking at that, it looks like a majority water, water.
We didn't go through and break out analysis of just saying water only. The projects were kind of divided by the typing that we have here. Some of that was kind of the conversation with staff, was that, you know, if a storm needs to be replaced in a water main, then they're sharing some of that pavement replacement or
Yeah.
mobile invasion cost.
That makes sense. I just wondered, out of that 54.8, I mean, gosh, it looks like between water and water and storm, that's a ton of the work, you know? So, I just wondered out what that percentage was. No worries.
Okay. And then, this is in the report, but as Gordon mentioned, we, you've had a couple of projects start. We did the prioritization list, and like I said, the main driver behind that is, is your water mains. Those have the highest risk of failure, the most impact to your businesses, so they're definitely gonna be in the, the top list. And we organized them, the first one we called in-process, that was almost $4 million. One you've already completed. One, as Gordon mentioned, is scheduled to be in construction at a later date. And then the next two groups we had were Priority Group A and Priority Group B. And like I said, these are kind of prioritized by that water main risk analysis. So, that first package, Group A, is about 8.3 million in water main replacement. So, Councilman, to kind of your question of, we didn't have it broken out by infrastructure category, but there you can see there's 8.3 million.
Yeah, exactly.
Strictly for water main. As we move into that Priority Group B, that being that next tier of, of water main replacements, there is one that's paired with a storm project, but another 5.4 million that was identified in that package. And so, these have not been programmed in your CIP to a specific year, but just trying to help you identify, like, this is out of our analysis, the higher risk areas and in order of prioritizing them. And then the remainder of the projects, we call it near-term and un-prioritized. So, these were relatively equal in the index scale and prioritization. So these were relatively equal in the index scale and prioritization. So they're ordered by their scores, but there wasn't a clear break to kind of build those packages like we had in A and B, but another 37.2 million in infrastructure replacement cost in the downtown. So that kind of wraps up the, the summary of the downtown infrastructure plan, kind of what the next piece was kind of next steps for council. I know the, the item after this is a request for you to consider adopting the downtown master plan. And we've helped kind of try to put the city on a proactive footing, prioritizing those projects, but ultimately, you know, there's the cost of that and how you pay for it. So having a little discussion next about providing some direction on funding alternatives and how to explore that. And then lastly, just being committed to kind of act on the recommendations that you give us. So with that, I will turn it back over to Gordon.
Like Jason said, it's, it's more for the adoption of the plan to replace the, this infrastructure as we can. That's the main thing about this is just giving us a plan to move forward, whether there's funding there or when with funding is received. But funding is the major thing. We've talked about the different, you, you can do federal grants, state grants. I mean, those are all great. The SRF and loans, those all work, but they're hard to come by. Loans, you still have to, you still have to pay it back somehow. So it's just a matter of delaying the inevitable. The only other option would be funding it through local, which would be for the most part, water rates. So that's something we looked at. I was asked to look at it to see how much it would take for this funding for $55 million. We're just round that up. And the only way to really do that would be through a water rate increase. I presented this, I ran through some numbers. I presented it to the effective fiscal and public policy committee, gave them a brief rundown. I'm not a rate study consultant by any stretch, but I just did some real simple numbers, looked at what we sold for water units this past year, how many cities, how many connections we have, how many water meters, those sort of things. I looked at it. And to do a project like this, $55 million worth of reconstruction downtown, you're not doing that in one year, you're going to do it in 20 years. You can't do it overnight. That, there's just not enough, well, there's not enough contractors, not enough personnel and the city won't handle it. That's a lot of construction. So we looked at a 20-year plan for this replacement. And if we were to do it, it through a water rate, well, we looked at different things. We looked at doing it through a water rate increase, basically on your water unit per unit, because we're paying like $4.12 per unit now, or through a monthly fee, adding just a monthly fee, just to fund this, just for this infrastructure. And it came out for over 20 years, I looked at just the downtown area, maybe 50 cents a unit. So for the average household, maybe $4 a month. That would be for the average home. If it was a single person living in a small house type of thing, it'd be maybe a dollar.
Per month?
Per month, per month. That's what we're looking at. But let's face it, we're only replacing about a mi, this year was a good year. We've replaced about a mile of water main over the 400 miles plus we have. That's a, well, that's simple math, it's 400 year replacement schedule. There's no water main out there made alive that'll, you know, that'll last 400 years.
And these are already 100 plus?
They're well over, yes. The one, the one that broke is 120, 119, but who's counting? So if we were to do something like that, it would be for a monthly rate, it'd be something like $7.76 month, uh, dollars, sorry, $7.76 per month, per every, every water account. You could do it a combination, you could do a water rate and a monthly rate. And there's, there's multiple different combinations you could do. I mean, I didn't go into all of them. I just did the two simple ones, just to keep it simple. And, but to do this, we're not going to want to do it just for downtown, you want to do it for the whole city. Half of it would be for the city, downtown area, this whole downtown infrastructure, which is the heart of the city. And then the other half would be for the residential area, suburbs type thing, whatever you want to call it, outside that area. That would be about a dollar per unit or.
So you're going to have a higher rate in downtown on your.
No, 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 it'd be, it'd be the same rate for everybody.
That's a problem for me is
No.
You're talking, I, I mean, it doesn't sound like much $7 or whatever you just said for people like you and I that work. But 84 bucks a year is a lot of money on top of what we're, let me finish on top of the sewer rate that we're looking at an equal amount and.
And Mayor, that's where to his point, you could switch it and instead of being a per user rate increase of like the $7, you could do it per unit. So then say you were an elderly couple or an elderly individual that was utilizing very little water, your rate might go up less than a dollar per month. Cause then you could, and then it takes into account that, because I agree with you. Mayors, look, if I'm not using a lot of water or if I do use a lot, it's then I know that I'm going to pay a little bit more because I'm utilizing that infrastructure more. Whereas, you know, if it was a single individual, an elderly individual, what have you, and they're not utilizing a ton of water, at least then they're not getting dinged for that. And then you would just compound those, the, the increase for the downtown specifically, but then also the increase for the overall vision and the entire city. And to, to Gordon's point is it would just be up to us of how we break that down, if it's per unit or per user. And obviously, I mean, I agree with your logic is that I don't want there, if you do the per user, you're really kind of hurting people that maybe are using very little. Just for the sake of equity, when, you know, that probably isn't the fair approach, in my opinion.
Keep in mind, this is my simple math here. I'm not recommending, well, I am recommending that if we go forward with some kind of way to fund this, that we hire a rate consultant, someone that can study this, someone that's, knows what they're doing.
Yeah, and that could tie in all of the rates we've been looking at.
Exactly.
Will affect the taxpayer. Cause we have a lot of rates.
What do we already have automatically programmed? Cause we've got automatic pilot on water.
Oh, okay.
That's right. For, we have a CPI for the water rates. It's already automatic, hasn't been utilized since 2018. We've left 62 cents per unit on the, on the table. $3.4 million we have not collected. That could have gone straight into water.
Well, shame on you, we passed it. So why didn't we, why didn't we put it in place?
I can't.
Not a council decision, that's a staff decision.
I think I can answer it. It's because the water fund has a healthy enough balance that it exceeded our fund balance policy and it did make sense to continue to raise rates when rates weren't warranted.
Well, we should have.
Back to it.
Put it on because you can always escrow it for these type of, I don't know.
I'd like to see how all of the rates are affected. I also like to see how the COVID funds come into play with some of this, what we've made commitments for on the American Rescue Plan.
We've committed all that and probably some, yeah.
Well, I know, but I'd like to see how it ties in to, to what we're looking at here. Kind of have a overall picture of what we're looking.
Yeah, keep, now there's two things here. One, we're doing the adoption of just the master.
Right, we're not, we're not approving the budget.
We need, yeah, you're right.
Well, I want to know what the impact is. I'm with Dan. Problem is, once you approve this, it's full steam ahead.
Yeah.
I want, I want to see it in front of me. How are we going to do this?
The only way to do it now would be to carve out some of the existing CIP funds and move them over. As, like we're doing for downtown.
What I'm asking, I want to.
You want the rate study before?
How you're going to fund this. And Teresa's smart enough to give, you don't have to hire a rate consultant right out of the box. Teresa's smart enough, working with you guys, you guys are smart enough to give us different ideas of how this can be funded. I just want to see the big picture. I, I don't care about how much it costs as much as do we have the ability to pay for it? And if we do, what is that effect on taxpayers or rate payers? They're not all taxpayers. You can have water without being a taxpayer. I want to see that impact on those homeowners. And I want to make sure, because we get so carried away, and I know that people in downtown don't like to have me say this, but we get so carried away worrying about the downtown that we don't care if water main breaks like it did six times up on Douglas Street by that water, new water plant. How many times it breaks? Six times it broke. We don't, we don't seem to worry as much about that as we do in the neighborhoods. That's what bothers me. So I want to see how you're going to allocate, because if you're going to get a $7.76, if I'm getting a $7.76 rate increase and it's all going downtown, I'm not going to be real happy and nobody should be that lives out.
That's right. And that's why I wouldn't recommend that.
No, it's not.
You've got projects where people are running on two-inch water lines, that were running on two-inch water lines and we funded them over the years and they've never gotten fixed yet, because we always have another priority we have to move that money to. That's just becoming unacceptable to me. And you know where I'm talking, you've got two and four inch lines around here that don't meet residential fire codes by any stretch, barely meet enough to run a washer and dryer. And we've had money in the budget to fix those, but we never get to them.
We have it on tonight's schedule.
We have what?
Tonight's, tonight's agenda. You already approved it. A design plan for some of those undersized water.
For some of them, but you don't have them all in there.
Oh, we can't do them all.
Well, I, that's.
Yeah, just trying to.
I've been around a long time, we fund a lot of them and we don't get as many done as we should. That's all, I just want, the big picture is where I'm at.
And I thought this was a good project overview that you presented to us, and I just want to tie in the impact, you know, like on the, on the work plan that you pointed out, some of those, some of that's probably already funded, but I can't tell you tonight what is and what isn't, because I don't have that information in front of me.
Well, the biggest one right out of the box, done.
Well, yeah.
It's just those top two.
But that's what I want to see, what, I, I want to see a comparison. I just want to see what the financial impact's going to be. Cause we do have other rates that are being raised and we need to be mindful of that. We just, I, I would just like to see it go hand in hand a little bit better than what, what we have here is good. I'm not criticizing what you presented, but I want to see the financial impact of it a little bit more clearly.
And that's where I'm at.
Cause what does in your, in both of your opinion, what does the adoption of this master plan mean?
Well, for me, it's a plan that we agree to follow, but I don't know what the impact is going to be. So it's kind of like, we'll figure that out later, but there's information available now that I'd like to have before me about how that's going to impact, you know, how do we pay for it? And, and just try to get a global, global look at that.
That's understandable.
Yeah, I think, I think, I mean, I, to do my job, I have to know what the financial impact is of a plan that we might adopt. I mean, it could be a beautiful plan, but you know, if we don't have a way to pay for it, if we don't have a way to look at rates when we're already increasing certain rates, I just want to be very careful about.
I don't, I don't think this necessarily, and this is just my interpretation, I don't think this necessarily puts us on the hook for it all, but it does help to prioritize some of those, those areas where we have upcoming projects or where we can move money to identify. I, I feel like this lays the groundwork for, all right, well, we know this project's been on SIP and it keeps getting pushed out a year after year. Well, it's a high priority one, so maybe that we need to, we need to rearrange some, some of our priorities.
See, and that's where, that's kind of where I'm coming from and interpreting this is you have to cast a vision.
Yes.
Or how, how would you, if you had the funds or once you have agreed upon, I mean, your last bullet point laid it out, right? Is that you adopt that and then the next step is, okay, well, then we have a discussion. Now that we know there's a prioritization, there's a vision for the future of how you want to go about improving your infrastructure, then we have to have a real conversation about how would you go about supporting that? How would you prioritize paying for that and what would it ultimately look like? This is just setting that tone, that prioritization list that then we can consult from or look at when we're making those improvements or recommendations.
Specifically when we go through the CIP process.
Yep.
And as we go through that every year, we add, I look at that and I've taken money out of the annual reconstruction and moved it over there, or I've taken it out of water replacement and moved it over there.
Well, I think realistically, if we approved this tonight, I don't think we would settle, have a study and be able to approve a rate increase.
Oh, no.
You know what I mean? I don't, I don't think that would.
And I'm not saying that either, but we do have a CIP in place. I just want to see how they, how they fit. I'm not asking, unless that, unless you're telling me that's a six-month project.
And that order, that, that order's important because it's important for our residents to have access to say, hey, you know, why, why is my street further down the list and why did this get moved up the list? Or we, we have to be able to rationalize that and say, well, this, you know, this, and I think that's where the study comes into play, because a lot of that information is in it. I will say, I, I really appreciate that as we're talking about rate increases, which nobody likes talking about, my immediate concern was the same as the mayor's. So everybody is paying for the infrastructure downtown. And I, I do appreciate that, that you said specifically that it will go to other parts of town. My only request would be, I do think that that needs to be a larger study and we need to make sure that we keep it equitable, because there are sides of town that are a lot older than other sides.
Yes, there is.
With infrastructure that's failing just as bad as.
And we did make that clear in our team meetings, that it wouldn't be spent on downtown. It would, half would be spent on the other areas and half would go to that because of the density and the impact that the downtown has.
That's correct. And that's the whole reason we, we took on this project, this whole downtown infrastructure is because we wanted to prioritize the work plan and take into account what the business owners and property owners were doing and how they, how they wanted to be a part of it to help us make that decision. If they're worried about, you know, they were doing a reconstruction on their building, then we'd stay away from it that year, that type of thing. We wanted to make sure they were aware of it and they had buy-in.
Cause it helps you make an informed decision rather than fighting fires, so to speak of, oh my gosh, this failed quickly, let's go prioritize fixing that immediately. Or, you know, oh, this one looks undersized or is not getting taken care of, we need to go rush to that. This allows us to have more of a roadmap saying, okay, well, this makes sense here and there. And Mayor, I mean, I understand your point of wanting to make sure that if it's a residential area, it's failed multiple times, we really got to address it. I completely understand the desire to take care of those neighborhoods and those needs, but we also understand, you know, and it's been illustrated on Nebraska, no, Pierce, Pierce of how, you know, just the incredible amount of traffic that goes through our downtown. So looking at traffic counts, it's like, well, you know, there could be, if there are three homes that live on one stretch and it's failed that many times, that's really frustrating for those owners. If it fails downtown multiple times, that's really frustrating for 50 times the amount of people that are living down in that downtown area. So then it just compounds it and that's where staff has direction to try to prioritize and, and you can't be everywhere at once.
Saying that, but you get a, you get a project, I'll give you a deal, Terrace up, up in Leeds. We had that in there trying to solve that problem, it's out again. Even though we've agreed to it in the CIP, it's gone, right?
Which, which project is this?
A project up there in the upper hills of Leeds.
Oh, on 48th Street?
Yeah.
Yeah, that was.
It's gone. Even though I fought to get it in, it's gone. And that's why I'm not much on prioritizing, because you get a deal with, with everybody here and you think you have a deal that the citizens have asked for, and then all of a sudden it disappears. That's, that's frustrating to me. I'm sorry, that's very frustrating to me.
I guess I'm, I don't think I'm asking for much. I was, how much time would the staff need just to give a global picture of what different funding alternatives there are and what the impact would be financially? Is that a two-week deal, three-week deal? That's a kind of defer.
Have you done your CIP for the year? Have you, or Bob, is the CIP?
It's, it's currently being balanced.
That's what I'm saying. So this doesn't have a huge rush. I mean, I get it, you want to, I, listen, I don't disagree with any of the projects. want to, I, listen, I don't disagree with any of the projects. That's not the point, but I don't care. If three of you are ready to vote for it, let's vote for it.
Well, and I'm just questioning or trying to follow the logic and understand, Dan, where you're coming from and the concern with the mayor, because I guess what I would be concerned on if I was Gordon or if I was Teresa is, okay, you crunch these rough figures of, well, this is what it could look like, this is what we think it could be. And then we say, okay, well, full steam ahead, let's adopt this now. Are we also saying, okay, well, we're adopting those rates that you threw out there and it better be accurate? Because I wouldn't imagine that's true.
Yeah.
This is not, yeah, we're not, we're not adopting any of these rates or anything. This is, that's a total suggestion.
That's right.
My main suggestion is, you hire someone to do, look at this and look at them completely.
Which could be very different from staff's interpretation and a rate study.
I am definitely not one of those people.
Absolutely.
An effective fiscal's going to look at it, too.
Yes.
Before we meet the next time.
Right.
CIP with all the numbers that have, that are pending, all I'm asking is just educate this council members to what some of the financial impact is when you see the 55 million. That's all I'm asking for. And if it doesn't take that long.
And, and we don't, and if you don't adopt it today, it, that, that's fine. I mean, these, these projects still don't go away.
Well, that's exactly right, too, Gordon, but.
We still need to have, we still need to have them fixed eventually.
With, with the holidays and everything, is it a two-week deferral? Too much to ask for?
Mayor and Council, I'd recommend that you could refer it to finance to do, they can do a fairly high-level fund analysis, determine how it'll be paid, and then bring it back after the first of the year, and we can actually discuss it as part of the overall CIP project and get in direction at that point. I think that's the most appropriate.
Well stated. And that's, I guess that's what I'm looking for, is just a high view.
But what I'm troubled by is that, and because I do want that, but then even with the numbers that they're given, we're not going to be, we're not going to be married to them.
All right.
No.
High view of what it could cost. It's nothing to do with the budget, it's nothing to do with the rates. The CIP will happen.
Staff time, something that we might not adopt.
Well, and I imagine many of these projects are already in the CIP. They might be in out, out years, but.
Actually, not, not hardly. Well, they are all in there now.
Yes.
They're all in there now, because we, I created that whole CIP specifically for the downtown.
Okay.
It's already in there. You've already looked at it. You've already adopted it last year, except for a couple of new ones that came in.
Good.
This is just to adopt this whole plan overall, to formally adopt.
When was this plan created?
When was this plan created?
Final night?
Uh, finally, this is it. It was just.
No, I mean, last year?
No, that was the preliminary one for last year's CIP. There was a few of them missing, like I said. We didn't have the sanitary or the storm master plans done at that point. Those will be coming, by the way, those will be coming for adoption as well.
But it's been a work in progress. Let me rephrase it. For how long?
Two years. Yeah, we started in '21.
I remember being on that.
I said that, yeah.
Okay.
Well, 15's a resolution adopting the downtown infrastructure reconstruction master plan. Move it.
Second.
Right. So is it too late to make a motion to defer it till January 8th, 2024?
Well, that's what you do now.
Oh, right.
Would you like to defer it or just delete it and have staff place?
Just defer, no defer it. You know, and I'd also like to just hear any more public input. I haven't heard, maybe you've all heard public input, but I'd like to get some public input on this.
They did extensive public input, I guess.
Yeah. But I'd like to have the council have that opportunity. Maybe no one will show up, but I don't, if I heard Gordon write, that there's not a real, there's not a downside to deferring this while we get the financial.
Oh, that's, that's correct.
Is there a withdrawal on of the original motion?
Oh.
Yeah, I'm comfortable moving, but I don't share Dan's concern, so I'm.
Well, I didn't.
So I guess if it fails, does it fail? Or, I just, I think that it's just using staff time to crunch numbers that we will or will not adopt. I mean, it's basically just asking staff or Teresa to say, hey, during the next two months of holiday season, give us an accurate representation of what this would cost. And then she would give us her best estimation. We wouldn't adopt that. We would then, if we thought that there was an appetite to go forward, we would hire a rate study, then we would adopt the rate study. So it's like, what would, what was the point of what Teresa did and the work that we asked her to do in addition to her already do?
It gives you at least a ballpark idea of what you're looking at per household.
But passing this won't matter one way or another.
Right.
The opportunity to have some information, so when questions come up, I would have, right now, I don't have the information.
Well, what I could do is, can I withdraw my second? And then Dan could offer the amendment, and if the amendment fails, then it goes to the main motion. Right?
Yes, there'd have to be a withdrawal of the motion and the second.
And then Dan can make the intent and see which way it goes or what happens. So I'll withdraw my second.
Well, or defer, Alex, you mean, I would make a deferral till January 8th.
Correct. And if the deferral passes, then it passes. If it doesn't, then it would go back to the main motion.
Well, I said I'd withdraw if Alex was okay with it.
Yeah, I'll withdraw and then you can move.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Well, I, I still don't think I'm going to support the amendment, or, you know, your motion to defer. I'm just giving you the opportunity, so then council can decide. It's not me, just one individual deciding.
Sounds good. So I'll make a motion to defer the item until January 8th, 2024. And that's our first meeting in 2024.
38th? Just clarifying.
On the sec, oh, but it's, so.
It's not a regular meeting, is it? Okay. That'd be on item 15. Agenda.
Second.
No.
Moore?
Aye.
Okane?
Aye.
Shaner?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Citizen concerns. Are there any citizens? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any citizens to be heard? Matthew?
Um, nothing. I am so happy that we made it to the holidays officially, and I'm looking forward to Thanksgiving. I'm going to eat so much food. That's everything. I hope everybody has some time to enjoy family and friends. And thank you to Semhar. Semhar hosted our Yamanashi sister delegates, and we had a fabulous dinner out at Western Iowa Tech. So we got a little, a little preview of what Thanksgiving could be. I'm not sure I've ever had bread pudding before, so that was interesting.
You've never had bread pudding?
I'd never had bread pudding. And I don't think my turkey's going to turn.
You were never raised, or you've never had bread pudding.
Right.
I'm going to call your father on that.
You should. I love bread pudding.
Me, too.
My father is actually quite the baker, so.
He's probably had it.
Oh, bread pudding at the Okane house. Should have a turkey hangover from that meal, Julie.
Um, I'm ready for the holidays as well. We have the Downtown Lighted Parade tonight, so head down there if you've got some time. I want to echo what Matthew said. I want to shout out to Semhar and her volunteers for all of the thought and the organization that was put into hosting what was almost a week-long delegation.
Two days, two full days.
Two, oh, two full days? Well, the planning, though. Right, the planning, I'm sure was, was probably months long.
For sure.
I mean, it's from transportation to accommodations to a Thanksgiving dinner, gourmet one. And I thoroughly enjoyed it. I really enjoyed getting to know the delegation a little bit more and appreciate all of that. I'm just ready to get to the holidays and let's get started.
Santa Claus.
Yeah, exactly.
Santa.
Saint Nick. So, um, I wanted to echo some of the comments. Semhar's here, so I wanted to give her a shout out for sure for the Yamanashi visit. I know that that can be a lot of planning, a lot of stress, a lot of moving parts. And so I appreciate all of your work that went into that very much so. And I know that the Yamanashi Sister City Committee also did work on that. And so please thank them on behalf of council for their efforts and work to do that, because, yeah, we hosted in numerous different places, and there was a lot of shuffling, different places and locations, and takes a lot of organization. So not only to Semhar and to her team, but also any other members of city staff. I mean, I see chief in the audience and others that, that played a very vital role in meeting with the delegation, making them feel welcome, giving gifts, all of that coordination. It does take a lot. So thank you all for your efforts. The second thing that I wanted to point out was, I know that Julie, myself, and the mayor were able to make it for Adam Carroll, the Business for Breakfast conversation. And I just wanted to thank our economic development team, as well as the Iowa West Coast Initiative. I know that there were multiple entities playing a part in the launch week that Iowa's West Coast puts on. Simco probably had a great deal and falls under that umbrella, I believe. So they all kind of played an active role in doing that. But I thought that Adam's speech was, was really powerful and moving. I remember meeting him 10 years ago when he gave his speech here in Sioux City, and I thought it was an amazing refresher and just a chance to really refocus our efforts. I, I took things away. I mean, I was trying to take as much notes as I could. Perhaps one of the, one of the things that has stuck with me the most, that I think we as a council need to be sure that we're pushing, not only as a council, but also, I think, as staff, is, he talked about the notion of being curious versus furious. And I think that so often, when you're trying to collaborate with multiple entities or homeowners or projects, and there are various interests or competing interests or different perspectives, sometimes it's easy to get frustrated and furious, rather than leaning into the curious and really asking what that next question is. Well, talk to me about why it looks like that. Talk to me about why that's your priority or why you want to do something. Because I think sometimes a knee-jerk reaction is to not understand and think you do, and then be frustrated. And so I would just urge all of us to think about that. And I thought, too, another point that was really important for council was, one of the things he talked about was the responsibilities of a leader. And he was, of course, speaking generally, but I took it as really what I could do as a city council member. And it talked about crafting a vision, building alignment, and championing execution. So how, as an organization, or Bob as the city manager, or any other department heads, how do you craft a vision for what you want the future to look like? How do you build alignment across your team or across your whole organization or the community? And then how do you champion that execution of actually getting it done, getting it across the finish line and being proud of the work that you've done? So I just thought it was a really moving refresher, and I was, I was really thankful for that opportunity. The last thing that I wanted to say was, I am not dressed like this because I'm just in the holiday spirit, although it sounds like a lot of us are. Um, I, yeah, I'm excited for the Holiday Lighted Parade. It should be a good time. And actually, yeah, yeah, hey, there you go. See, Dan's got the socks ready. I needed the socks to, you know, add to the outfit. But this jacket actually lights up and everything, so as soon as we get outside, we'll be able to see it in full effect. I tell you what, it does. It completely lights up. And I got, I got my Santa hat and everything in the van, in my sleigh, waiting.
People at home can see it.
Here, you want to grab the, it's right in this pocket. There's a little remote. Well, we'll probably have to, like, hit the lights to.
Hit the lights. Oh, it'll show. Oh, it's, oh, look at that.
Bam!
Wow.
Get ready, Sueland.
Woo!
Oh, yeah. I tell you what, you're not going to miss me on the lighted parade, so.
Alex, could you tell council where you wore this this morning, at a high-level meeting?
Where was I this morning?
You were at a meeting, some development.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, I guess I would say that. I thought it was, I thought it was very funny. I was thinking through my day when I went to put this outfit on, because, you know, once I, I commit that I have an event in the evening, I'm pretty much stuck in that outfit, which is why I'm probably never seen outside of, like, dress shoes and a sport coat. But I, yeah, I was thinking about my meeting, and I had a very busy city meeting. And so one of my meetings this morning was with, around the table with multiple very, very successful, very wealthy business owners. And I had to explain why, why I looked like the clown at the board. But, um, yeah, that was, luckily, I know most of them very well, so they, they, of course, knew well.
Forgiving.
Definitely. Yeah, they were forgiving over that. So, but yeah, I'm very excited for it. It will be down, and our downtown starts at 6:15. So we'll be lining up and then being down there. They have a record number of entries this year, so it should be a really good one. And the weather's not too bad, so.
Long Forest Street?
Yeah.
Iowa.
Iowa, too. And then does it go to the museum, right? Museum and then there?
Yep.
Great.
Thank you for showing.
I've seen you lit up all the ways. It's nice.
Uh-huh, yeah. You were waiting for that one.
Mr. Moore.
Are you done?
I'm good. I'm good. Thank you.
Record, record time.
I, I, well, tonight's parade, I think parades are extremely important for our community. I'm glad we're having it. I love parades. But I also want to thank the electrical workers, the, the local 231 that did a lot of work to make this happen tonight. So thank you.
And downtown partners, yeah, between the two.
Yep, yep. They, it's great. And they, and the media covered it well, so I think we should have a, we've had great turnouts for the parades.
Mm-hmm.
Really have, just a number of people. And then Alex raises, and I'm sorry I couldn't make it to that breakfast meeting.
It was really good.
Yeah, I'm sure it was. And he's a friend of yours, you said, I think.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, we've kept in contact.
But it reminded me of, I watched the interview with Rosalind, with Jimmy Carter's wife who passed away, and she was helping the, the population with mental health issues. And she came around and said, she was very bold, and she said, if I'm going to be in a position of power and authority, I'm going to use it for the greater good of my community or for my country. And that says a lot. And so that's kind of what I'm hearing you saying. Everybody has their own interpretations, but it's like, you know, let's, let's not only advocate different ideas, but let's also implement them. And I think we have the ability to do that with the positions that we're in. So I just, and, and I know this is my end-of-the-year speech, so I'll save it, but I do want to tell you all, we have our, I love being on the city council. I'm proud to be on the city council. We agree to disagree at times, and I'm, and I'm really proud of that fact, and I really respect each and every one of you for your ideas. And it's just been a joy, but I will save some of that for the end of the year and for the swearing-in ceremony of the mayor and, and council member Shaner and Jay.
And tonight, we'll ride the trolley, happy as clams, even though we didn't vote the same way, right?
Oh, absolutely. Oh, yeah. The vote's taken. We, and the mayor taught me that when I first came on the.
Yep, you'll leave it right here.
Take the vote. He told me someday I'll know what it's like to be on a 4-1 end of a vote, but.
Yeah, I'm been, yeah, but you will.
Yeah, but I'll get there. That's all I am.
I, yeah, I want to thank Semhar, first of all, and, and what you're talking about, Jimmy Carter is an excellent example. And I had the privilege in 1985 to, to work with he and his wife on the Miracle on the Border. We built 100 homes. And I went down to get him to sign a book, and his wife and him would not take a break to sign the book until it was break time. And the, you know, you can argue whether it was a good president or bad president, but you can't argue whether they were good human beings. And unfortunately, he's in hospice care tonight.
Yes.
So, but should be expected when you've been married that long that you won't last long after your spouse goes. But anyway, I had that privilege, and you would not find two sweeter people, I can tell you that. So I move we adjourn. Second?
Moore?
Aye.
Okane?
Aye.
Shaner?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Waters?
Aye.
Does someone have a pen?